Good evening. The time is 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District, Board of Education Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the 6th. Mrs. Campous, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fallon.
Present.
Mrs. Rarica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present. All right, if you would stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Campous.
Ms. Fallon.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Thank you. All right, with that approved, we can move on to item four. This is our discussion item section, 4.01. We have our Healthcare Connection Incorporated CEO, Ms. Jolene Joseph, and COO, Ms. Angie Hartman. So at this time, I will turn the floor over to you guys. If you'll just please make sure your microphone is on. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to take a few minutes of your board meeting to share a little bit more about the Healthcare Connection as an F2HC, a federally qualified health center, and our experience in operating school-based health centers. So we're going to tag team this evening and share with you a little bit more about who we are. If you are unfamiliar, we thought we could at least give you a little bit of background and history so that it makes more sense as to why we may have an interest in helping to operate and partner with you on a school-based health center. So the Healthcare Connection is, the corporate headquarters is what I would define, is located in Lincoln Heights. So you may see it on I-75 if you're traveling southbound on I-75. We are directly across the road from GE Aerospace. And that is where, Lincoln Heights is where our roots began in 1967. So we are 58 years young this year and have been open and providing critical needs and access to the underserved, medically underserved, and underinsured patient population for a while over 58 years now. Our goal and mission is to provide access to most of the medical and/or dental services. That's how we began with volunteer doctors and dentists and nurses. We evolved into a community health center in 1972. We are the first community health center to be established in the state of Ohio, and we are one of the oldest in the nation. So we feel be confident that we've got this ironed out and we feel good about how we're delivering services and care. It's pretty comprehensive, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that this evening on all of the services that are provided, maybe not necessarily in the school-based health center all of the time, but every patient has access to all of these services across nine of our locations. So we are located in Lincoln Heights. We are in Mount Healthy. We are also in Forest Park. And we are currently co-located with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health. So we've placed a medical provider in their Madison Road site and a medical provider at their Amelia site so that we're able to provide services to their clients. And then we also have now four school-based health centers, one in Princeton School District. We have one in Witten Woods. We have one in Mount Healthy, and then we also service Lockland. We served last year almost 22,000 unduplicated or unique patients, and that equated to well over 56,000 patient visits. Very busy practice. Seventy-seven percent of who we are serving are considered uninsured or underinsured. So the patient population of focus is really important to us to ensure access is available to any and all. We do not turn anyone away. We offer a sliding fee discount program for anyone that is unable to pay if they do not have insurance or coverage of some sort, and that is all based on family side income. We currently have about 130-plus employees across all of our nine locations. Overall, this is the comprehensive list of services that we provide. Mount Healthy and Lincoln Heights have all of these services in place. Our other outlying sites have some of these services in place. And you'll learn that our school-based health centers we operate always include medical, dental, and behavioral health. Those three seem to be the highest need areas of concern for students. We always serve staff and, if possible, the community in those school-based health centers as well. But we partner with University of Cincinnati for OB services. And then we have a very robust pediatric and adolescent patient population. Of that nearly 22,000 patients that we served last year, over 50% of those are kids. So we have a very high number of pediatric. And then, as you can see, we just opened vision services at the end of the year and infectious disease, which is hepatitis C, HIV, at our Lincoln Heights location. And then we also just added substance use and MUD services at our Lincoln Heights.
So these are pictures of our four school-based health sites, Princeton, Mount Healthy, Lockland. And our newest one down the right-hand corner is Witten Woods. Two additional pictures just to give you an idea of what our typical, inside of our school-based health centers look like. We have dental like we all do here with startup CenterPointe, as well as typically two medical exam rooms and one room that's for behavioral health services. So I think you all know and are bought into what school-based health is since you already have those services on-site. But we believe that it's a true commitment between the school district and the health partner. We come to an agreement on what that looks like and what services we provide, but we want to be right in the school where the services are best suited to meet the needs of students while they're on campus.
So we actually, in 2021, we had already established the Princeton School-Based Health Center that had been operating with medical services only. And after reviewing the regional needs assessment, and then we also conducted our own needs assessment, it was evident that services needed to expand. And so that's when we added behavioral health at Princeton. And then we just, most recently, added oral health services with the help of the Ohio Department of Health so that we could place two dental chairs inside of the Princeton School District. But what we had found that was really revealing and why we believe in that why now and why is school-based health so important is because if you look at the statistics across Hamilton County, the number of children living in poverty or are considered uninsured, their need for access to services rises dramatically. And we know that oftentimes, parents have many social drivers or social determinants of health challenges that place a lot of pressure on them to be able to get their children to services. And so we try to, as Angie had indicated, really make this more accessible to them and eliminate or prevent as many barriers as possible so that we can get much-needed care. Early intervention is critical, and we know that because their academic success really depends on their health and their performance in the classroom. Behavioral health. I don't know if you've had behavioral health in the past in your school-based health center, but this we have found, and this will be my eighth school-based health center that I've operated. I operated one in Ohio, which is where I spent some time at a federally qualified health center. And then prior to that, I was in Northwest Ohio where I served almost 13 years, and we had opened two. We find that behavioral health sometimes is even more important than the medical service because children are struggling and many times folks don't understand why they're having so many challenges in the classroom. And if we take the time to better understand what's happening in their lives and what is going on, we can certainly make an impact, reducing suicide and also looking at ways that we can effectively change behaviors in the classroom. So we have, ever since I've started School-Based Health Center, that is a staple that we have as part of our programming, is that there's access to behavioral health, not forced upon a student, but certainly available to them and the parent if needed.
But this is a list of the school-based services that we're typically offering. Jolene mentioned some of these earlier, for sure, medical, behavioral health, dental. We just rolled out a portable vision program that goes out to schools. That's not, that doesn't just have to be at the school-based health center itself. We can go to the elementary schools and wherever we can get a little bit of space to set up. And we bring a optometrist and a licensed optician in our team to do comprehensive eye exams and glasses as needed right on-site. And then we also have pharmacies. Pharmacy is a fairly new service for the healthcare connection, but we have one pharmacy on-site at Lincoln Heights, as well as we're getting ready to open a second one at our Mount Healthy Family Practice location. Reason why this is important to talk about relative to school-based health is that we have free delivery services. And so a lot of the work that the nurse practitioner does in our school-based health centers, if there's a prescription needed, she can order that prescription from the pharmacy, have it delivered to the school-based health center, have it delivered to a school nurse potentially as needed, like if it's a uterol inhaler or something like that, but also it can be delivered to their home. And so a lot of times, parents want it delivered directly to the home, and that's a free service. Our delivery drivers will go anywhere. So that's something new, and that school-based health sites have really been taking advantage of that. I think this is something you all already know. There's a direct correlation between the services provided in the health, a school-based health center and health educational outcomes. We want to make sure that we're aligned with the goals that you have with the district and what you're trying to achieve, as well as aligning with what health services can help support that. So we need to make sure that conversation is happening so that, for example, if you are having an issue with kids being out sick and it's impacting attendance, we can really dive into that particular goal or objective that you have and try to be a partner with you on that. We know that it leads to better school performance, grade promotion, and high school participation if they have their health needs met. A few things we wanted to highlight for you is what we believe, some key things to a successful partnership in schools, what practices that we put in place. Number one, relationship building is a priority. We will spend a lot of time making sure that you know who we are, that we know your needs. We create an advisory council in every one of our partnerships with school districts. That includes key stakeholders within your district, leaders that you would identify, that you would like to be regularly working with us. Typically, school nurses are on that advisory council, the staff, providers that work in the school-based health center themselves, myself typically, and some other staff at the Healthcare Connection. A lot of times, the Director of Student Services, if you have one, a communications person, depending upon how far that goes. But the point is, is that there's advisory council that we typically also like to have a parent voice and a student voice on as well so that we're taking that into consideration when we're making decisions in the school-based health center. But we meet once a month with every advisory council in each of our districts to make sure that we're staying on top of the needs in the district, to make sure that we're reporting back what progress that we're making, what we're seeing in the school-based health center so you all are aware. And then we talk about what's working, what's not, maybe what events you have coming up in the district that you would like us to participate in. Ultimately, we would like you to see us as your main health partner. And if you have a need that comes up, even if it's, you're doing an education class for the elementary students on hygiene and how to wash their hands appropriately, or maybe you need us to come to parent-teacher night to set up a table to give that out information and engage with families, we would like you to come to us first and express that need, and we will do everything we can to try to meet that need. We typically establish our school-based health centers as a welcoming space. This space here is already built, but a lot of times you'll see, we go in Witten Woods. Our space is in the colors of Witten Woods School District, blue and green. Our signage reflects the district. We like getting artwork from students of the district to frame and put up in our school-based health centers. We really want it to be a welcoming space that the students feel comfortable coming in. We don't like it to be, look like it's this external agency that's coming in and just flopped in your space. We want to feel integrated. We want students to feel like this is part of Norwood School District. If you would ask students or people passing in the hallway at one of our other districts, where's the Healthcare Connection location, they might not know what to answer. But if you said, where's the Viking School-Based Health Center, or where's the Witten Woods School-Based Health Center, they would be able to tell you. So that just gives you the example of how we like to be involved and integrate ourselves with the district. We will regularly be trying to raise awareness and providing continuous communications. We will hopefully be able to leverage the traditional communication methods that you use in the district to share information, whether, and we'll provide infographics, different information. Maybe it's a time of year for the flu, or it's, you know, seventh-grade immunizations or twelfth-grade immunizations. We'll do targeted communication to get that out to your parents' families to make sure we're meeting their needs. Our services are multi-tiered. Jolene touched on this a little bit, but like we said, we will bring vision services to you. You'll have, you know, dental services would be on-site, behavioral health as well. Even if you already have another mental health partner that you work with, I'm not sure if you have one, but if you do, that works well with us. They tend to do more longer-term care. We do brief intervention therapy, so we work well together and do warm handoffs. If they have a waiting list of kids to see, we can see those children prior to them getting a spot with the external provider. On the flip side, if we see a child and we realize that they have more chronic needs, it's going to take more time over the period of time, we will do a warm handoff to the tower house or whoever is the external partner. So we also, Jolene mentioned this as well, but we are a connection to the network of all of our integrated care. So if there's another need that's beyond what's in the school-based health center, you saw all the resources that we have within the healthcare connection. Even if, like, students are struggling with vaping, for example, or other things like that, we could potentially give support and education and referrals for addiction services, things like that. We are focused on sustaining ourselves, right? And you will, we will do everything to sustain our operations. We want to continue to be accessible to children for the long haul, so we are paying attention to our business model. We are doing everything we can to align ourselves with the district goals, as well as making sure our consents are aligned with enrollment. That's, we have success with doing that in other districts. When Jolene and I kind of came to the picture, Princeton was one of those sites that was struggling in the beginning that, you know, former leadership didn't have as much experience with school-based health, as well as there were some other factors at play. But we put in a model that played that, turned that around and made that successful. And so we're very much focused on sustainability. You can count on that from us. We've unloaded a lot of information on you, and I know you all are familiar with school-based health already, but are there any questions that we can answer that you're thinking of based on what we share?
I know the state of Ohio has approved organizations that they send out to schools to teach sex ed. I don't suppose you guys would be one of those approved organizations?
We are not.
Boo.
You know, I don't know if there's ever any change at the state level, but I, yeah, they have a particular curriculum that they prefer to have used. We can be an ancillary support to answering questions and providing information from the nurse practitioner.
I was going to say, it would be great to have medically accurate information rather than what the state prescribes, which is not medically accurate. Right? Next question is, Amber and I went to OSBA conference this weekend, and one of the classes I went to on was human trafficking, and they scared the pants off of me. And you guys were saying how you have curriculum so you can go talk to kids about, I forget what it was you said, but just because I went to that class this weekend, would that be one of them?
Yes.
Awesome.
Behavioral health provider would be able to provide education, whether it's in a classroom or one-on-one, and making sure that the nurse practitioner and the behavioral health provider are teamed up to ensure we're screening. So we use a collection of screening tools with the youth so that we can better identify what some of their challenges are and then address those challenges once they're identified. And part of our tool that we use was actually developed out of the University of Michigan by a nurse practitioner. And that addresses anything from not sleeping well to
Oh, yeah.
Issues with their partner, if they're in a relationship, and what might that look like, or at home, lack of food. Any of those are identified in the questionnaire. So again, we can more closely align with developing a treatment plan around what the needs of that student.
So I work at Princeton, and we just finished our vision round, actually, for our students at the middle school. And it was fantastic. They're bringing the glasses to the students at the school cup, and they do the screening right there in the office. It's been easy. And I know that the sports integration, too, has been really helpful as a partner on-site. And I'm an interpreter. I've actually worked at your office at Lincoln Heights. And so the provided services that you guys have had, I've experienced firsthand from a professional standpoint and from a patient's side. And, you know, I've always been very impressed with the way that you've handled things. You've always had a very inclusive approach. And just from my own experience with you, it's very comprehensive. So I appreciate it from having to work with that group.
And thank you for that feedback.
And on the vision thing, I know our younger kids do a vision field trip.
So they probably go to the OneSite clinic that they do at Xavier University.
Probably.
Yes.
And my kid still has her glasses from that, so this would be a great, like, add-on.
Back in the day, we used to just test. The nurse would pull us out, and they'd like, "Heard you were squinting in class. Go down to the nurse."
I think the nurse still does, but...
Screenings will still happen. I mean, I think that, I think you have a nurse, part-time nurse.
We have a full-time nurse through Hamilton County ESC.
Okay. So they have to have those vision screens completed usually in the fall of every year. And if there's trouble getting that done, when we bring on our vision team, screening is a part of the comprehensive eye exam as well. It's not, you know, I think when OneSite comes in and we still work with OneSite, I'm not sure to do screenings. They would do all those at once, but that's an option through the vision program that we have, portable program.
Will you be able to get up and running by August if we work with you with enrollment?
That's our, that's our intention. Yes. If all goes well in the transition, I would expect that that would, I mean, everything is set up, so it's really about hiring back to support the needs.
Oh, over the summer, a lot of people need the sports.
The sports physical, I was going to ask.
It's probably more busy there in the summer than during the year. I don't know, but sports, physicals.
So we've had separate, like, for districts even that doesn't have, that they don't have a school-based health center with us, but we have a relationship. We've done special sports physicals sessions where we've picked a couple of days with the athletic director and partnered to set that up. But the other thing that we do where we have a school-based health center is we typically come back early before school starts, like even a week ahead of time, and we broadcast that out to the families so that they come in and get their school health needs met, whether it be a sports physical or immunizations that they have to have before they start school or anything like that. And we can advertise that. And that's what we typically do in our other districts. We give that time and sort of dedicate and get some communications out regarding it.
And I know one of our districts tries to even begin when, in May, to get some.
I would say, because the sports start at the end of July. They start way before school starts. Now that I have kids that do that, it's like, whoa.
As well, is, are you guys open during the summer for the families who, maybe they do their annual doctor's visits in the summer just to get them out of the way instead, or those physicals and stuff like that? Or is it going to be a limited time period where you're like, okay, we're open through the end of May, then we shut down, but mid-July, we open back up or something like?
It's district-specific.
Okay.
Depending on the needs. So we have one opening this summer.
So the external door is a real key. If there's an external.
We have that. We have an elevator and extra. We added it. We're good.
So that helps us be open during the summer. So Witten Woods, for example, has always been intended to be a year-round, and we just have, we've been open since October 2023. And this will be the first summer that we're attempting to be open. We needed to build up our patient base first We needed to build up our patient base first to make it worth having a team, a salaried team here to be able to do that. But I, I noticed the hours on the door. Our hours would be longer than that in general anyway for a given day. We typically like to open up around 30 minutes prior to the kids arriving to start at school. So I think, I mentioned Mary, that was at eight.
Eight.
So we would likely look at, if it was agreeable to all of you, that 7:30 would likely be when we would like to start services in the morning and then be open till like four for an hour day.
That would be awesome. I can't tell you how many times I went in there this past year and just like, nobody was there. I was like, my kid has an earache. I just needed to get checked out.
And I think that's part of it. We want you to be able to count on that we're going to be here and get used to the fact that we're here Monday through Friday, these same hours. And that helps everybody know and count on trust. So the way we approached it in the other districts.
Would July 1st start date be enough time if the board approves an MOU with you?
To get ready.
To get ready, yes, by, yes, by August 14th?
We would likely try to get, we're interviewing for people any day for positions. That would be similar to what's here. So we're already starting some of that work. We would get you the consent form ahead of time. Maybe talk about how to align that.
That would, that would be very helpful because then our tech people could incorporate it in the enrollment packet.
And I, I would say if we have an MOU between the district and the, the health center, then we potentially could still, even if we are not ready to open the doors in July, that we could still do sports physicals with that MOU and provide that as a service just to introduce ourselves to the students and some of the staff and meet a need that you have in advance of, of the actual school-based health center.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
Madam President, I know we have a call scheduled at 6:30.
Yep.
And I, I, I think we should move the presentation for the five-year forecast until after executive session, if everybody's okay with that.
I think so.
Do we need to make a motion to change the agenda?
Yeah, do we need to change it?
Julie, do we need to make a motion to change the agenda now?
Because it's, it's just a committee meeting.
It's just committee, yeah.
So we don't vote.
So we need to, we need to vote to enter executive session.
Okay. Yeah, she's going to see if he's. I could go ahead, we could go ahead and do that, right?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. All right. So in accordance with O R C 121.22G3, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, as well as in accordance with O R C 121.22G4, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
A motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Ms. Fallon?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. All right, the time is 6:29, and we are in executive session.
Six fifty-seven and we are back into open session. At this time, we will go to item four point zero two, which is our treasurer's report. This is our five-year forecast. So at this time, I will turn it over to our treasurer, Mrs. Campus.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have the five-year forecast for you tonight to review. This is our May forecast. Every district in the state of Ohio is required to submit two forecasts a year detailing estimated cash positions for the next five years, also showing three years of history. After board approval, I will submit this to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development for their review. For the current year, our total general fund expenditures are thirty-three million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand and our revenue is thirty-two million eight hundred and twenty thousand. Our total projected loss for the year is one million sixty-two thousand. We do have some transfers from the general fund this year and next year. Future years are negative regardless of transfers, though. Our June thirtieth expected year end cash balance is thirteen million six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which is about the same as fiscal year twenty-two. Of total current revenues, fifty-eight percent of our total is from real estate taxes. All other revenues are fourteen percent and state funding is at twenty-eight percent. However, if you dig into the numbers for state revenues, you will see our core funding is only twenty-two percent. So the state does reimburse us a small part of the homestead and rollback exemptions you see on your tax bill. But if you look at just the core funding, we're at twenty-two percent, which would be that six million and the one point four million. So our state revenues are falling. I expect to be at about eighteen percent in the next couple of years. Of total current expenses, seventy-two percent are from personnel costs, which is typical for schools as we are a service industry. Purchased services are at seventeen percent and all of their expenditures are twelve percent. Purchased services include things like transportation, cleaning, special ed contracted services, utilities, professional development for teachers and staff. But if you consider the fact that transportation and cleaning services are personnel, part of that purchased services could be considered personnel costs, which makes our personnel costs probably closer to the eighty percent mark, which is the mark that's considered unsustainable for school districts. For our projected revenues, expenditures, and cash balance for the next five years, the first two set of bar graphs is last year. So in light blue, you'll see the revenues and in yellow, you'll see expenditures. The second set of bar graphs are this current year. And you'll see that is the first year that we are spending into our carryover, meaning that we have negative cash flow or our revenues are less than our expenditures. As you go through the rest of the years of the forecast, you'll see that worsens. And then the blue line across the middle of those bar graphs shows our cash balance, which drops to three point two million by twenty-twenty-nine, which is a very, very low cash balance. Our budget is thirty-two million dollars, so that's about ten percent. Days cash on hand. For the current year, you'll see we'll end about one hundred and forty-eight days of cash for the twenty-twenty-five year. It's about in the middle there, under twenty-twenty-five. One hundred and forty-eight days is considered forty point five percent of the prior year expenditures. You'll hear that a lot in the news where they're talking about what percentage of cash should school districts have. Some legislators are talking about how it should be thirty percent. We're at forty point five. Thirty percent is unsustainable. Honestly, when staff leave us in June, we probably owe about five percent, six percent. We have encumbrances at the end of June that's not included in that cash balance. So altogether, fifty percent is a much more reasonable number of cash that we should have on hand. But you'll see in twenty-twenty-seven, when we do hit the about thirty percent cash, you'll see it just drops really fast after that and gives you no time to make cuts or even get another levy passed before you're just completely out of money. So that thirty percent is just not a good idea. Fifty percent is a much better number for, I believe, all school districts, but especially for us. Our student counts have increased as we see growth in both residential and open enrollment students. This growth is attributed to the success of our NORAD-MOTISORY program. So you'll see in twenty-twenty-four, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-one students and in twenty-twenty-five, we have fifteen hundred and seventy-five. And I do include growth as we move forward projected for the MOTISORY and open enrollment. Unfortunately, all school districts in the state of Ohio or almost all school districts in the state of Ohio are still seeing that two percent decline just based on birth rates. When comparing our past November forecast to our current one presented tonight, you will see that this year has a bit more of a shortfall than expected in November. So on this graph, the dotted line is our past forecast from November and the solid line is our current May forecast. So you will see in twenty-twenty-five, that little dip there where we're doing slightly worse, that's due to transfers out. But through the rest of the forecast period, we stay about the same until we hit twenty-twenty-seven. The cash flow issue was repeated in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine as our local tax revenues are reduced to the city's new ordinances abating new construction tax revenue. Although none of the new apartment projects were included on the prior forecast, I did have small new construction amounts based on history of tear downs and rebuilds in the forecast. Since the city wiped out all new construction for the next fifteen years, I've been forced to remove that growth from the forecast, making our negative cash flow even worse than stated before. And another thing that you'll see, both lines, May and November, both lines have us down in that pinky-red area, which is a dangerous place to be according to the State Department of Education. That's a fiscal watch area. So in this forecast... It is six fifty-seven and we are back into open session. At this time, we will go to item four point zero two, which is our treasurer's report. This is our five-year forecast. So at this time, I will turn it over to our treasurer, Mrs. Campus. Thank you, Madam President. I do have the five-year forecast for you tonight to review. This is our May forecast. Every district in the state of Ohio is required to submit two forecasts a year detailing estimated cash positions for the next five years, also showing three years of history. After board approval, I will submit this to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development for their review. For the current year, our total general fund expenditures are thirty-three million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand and our revenue is thirty-two million eight hundred and twenty thousand. Our total projected loss for the year is one million sixty-two thousand. We do have some transfers from the general fund this year and next year. Future years are negative regardless of transfers, though. Our June thirtieth expected year end cash balance is thirteen million six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which is about the same as fiscal year twenty-two. Of total current revenues, fifty-eight percent of our total is from real estate taxes. All other revenues are fourteen percent and state funding is at twenty-eight percent. However, if you dig into the numbers for state revenues, you will see our core funding is only twenty-two percent. So the state does reimburse us a small part of the homestead and rollback exemptions you see on your tax bill. But if you look at just the core funding, we're at twenty-two percent, which would be that six million and the one point four million. So our state revenues are falling. I expect to be at about eighteen percent in the next couple of years. Of total current expenses, seventy-two percent are from personnel costs, which is typical for schools as we are a service industry. Purchased services are at seventeen percent and all of their expenditures are twelve percent. Purchased services include things like transportation, cleaning, special ed contracted services, utilities, professional development for teachers and staff. But if you consider the fact that transportation and cleaning services are personnel, part of that purchased services could be considered personnel costs, which makes our personnel costs probably closer to the eighty percent mark, which is the mark that's considered unsustainable for school districts. For our projected revenues, expenditures, and cash balance for the next five years, the first two set of bar graphs is last year. So in light blue, you'll see the revenues and in yellow, you'll see expenditures. The second set of bar graphs are this current year. And you'll see that is the first year that we are spending into our carryover, meaning that we have negative cash flow or our revenues are less than our expenditures. As you go through the rest of the years of the forecast, you'll see that worsens. And then the blue line across the middle of those bar graphs shows our cash balance, which drops to three point two million by twenty-twenty-nine, which is a very, very low cash balance. Our budget is thirty-two million dollars, so that's about ten percent. Days cash on hand. For the current year, you'll see we'll end about one hundred and forty-eight days of cash for the twenty-twenty-five year. It's about in the middle there, under twenty-twenty-five. One hundred and forty-eight days is considered forty point five percent of the prior year expenditures. You'll hear that a lot in the news where they're talking about what percentage of cash should school districts have. Some legislators are talking about how it should be thirty percent. We're at forty point five. Thirty percent is unsustainable. Honestly, when staff leave us in June, we probably owe about five percent, six percent. We have encumbrances at the end of June that's not included in that cash balance. So altogether, fifty percent is a much more reasonable number of cash that we should have on hand. But you'll see in twenty-twenty-seven, when we do hit the about thirty percent cash, you'll see it just drops really fast after that and gives you no time to make cuts or even get another levy passed before you're just completely out of money. So that thirty percent is just not a good idea. Fifty percent is a much better number for, I believe, all school districts, but especially for us. Our student counts have increased as we see growth in both residential and open enrollment students. This growth is attributed to the success of our NORAD-MOTISORY program. So you'll see in twenty-twenty-four, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-one students and in twenty-twenty-five, we have fifteen hundred and seventy-five. And I do include growth as we move forward projected for the MOTISORY and open enrollment. Unfortunately, all school districts in the state of Ohio or almost all school districts in the state of Ohio are still seeing that two percent decline just based on birth rates. When comparing our past November forecast to our current one presented tonight, you will see that this year has a bit more of a shortfall than expected in November. So on this graph, the dotted line is our past forecast from November and the solid line is our current May forecast. So you will see in twenty-twenty-five, that little dip there where we're doing slightly worse, that's due to transfers out. But through the rest of the forecast period, we stay about the same until we hit twenty-twenty-seven. The cash flow issue was repeated in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine as our local tax revenues are reduced to the city's new ordinances abating new construction tax revenue. Although none of the new apartment projects were included on the prior forecast, I did have small new construction amounts based on history of tear downs and rebuilds in the forecast. Since the city wiped out all new construction for the next fifteen years, I've been forced to remove that growth from the forecast, making our negative cash flow even worse than stated before. And another thing that you'll see, both lines, May and November, both lines have us down in that pinky-red area, which is a dangerous place to be according to the State Department of Education. That's a fiscal watch area. So in this forecast...
It is six fifty-seven and we are back into open session. At this time, we will go to item four point zero two, which is our treasurer's report. This is our five-year forecast. So at this time, I will turn it over to our treasurer, Mrs. Camps.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have the five-year forecast for you tonight to review. This is our May forecast. Every district in the state of Ohio is required to submit two forecasts a year detailing estimated cash positions for the next five years, also showing three years of history. After board approval, I will submit this to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development for their review. For the current year, our total general fund expenditures are thirty-three million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, and our revenue is thirty-two million, eight hundred and twenty thousand. Our total projected loss for the year is one million, sixty-two thousand. We do have some transfers from the general fund this year and next year. Future years are negative regardless of transfers, though. Our June thirtieth expected year in cash balance is thirteen million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which is about the same as fiscal year twenty-two. Of total current revenues, fifty-eight percent of our total is from real estate taxes. All other revenues are fourteen percent, and state funding is at twenty-eight percent. However, if you dig into the numbers for state revenues, you will see our core funding is only twenty-two percent. So the state does reimburse us a small part of the homestead and rollback exemptions you see on your tax bill. But if you look at just the core funding, we're at twenty-two percent, which would be that six million and the one point four million. So our state revenues are falling. I expect to be at about eighteen percent in the next couple of years. Of total current expenses, seventy-two percent are from personnel costs, which is typical for schools as we are a service industry. Purchased services are at seventeen percent, and all of their expenditures are twelve percent. Purchased services include things like transportation, cleaning, special ed contracted services, utilities, professional development for teachers and staff. But if you consider the fact that transportation and cleaning services are personnel, part of that purchased services could be considered personnel costs, which makes our personnel costs probably closer to the eighty percent mark, which is the mark that's considered unsustainable for a school district. For our projected revenues, expenditures, and cash balance for the next five years, the first two set of bar, the bar graph is last year. So in light blue, you'll see the revenues, and in yellow, you'll see expenditures. The second set of bar graphs are this current year, and you'll see that is the first year that we are spending into our carryover, meaning that we have negative cash flow or our revenues are less than our expenditures. As you go through, through the rest of the years of the forecast, you'll see that worsens. And then the blue line across the middle of the forecast, of those bar graph shows our cash balance, which drops to three point two million by twenty-twenty-nine, which is a very, very low cash balance. Our budget is thirty-two million dollars, so that's about ten percent. Days cash on hand. For the current year, you'll see we'll end about one hundred and forty-eight days of cash for the twenty-twenty-five year. Can I think I can get the thing, thing, it's about in the middle there, under twenty-twenty-five. One hundred and forty-eight days is considered forty point five percent of the prior year expenditures. You'll hear that a lot in the news where they're talking about what percentage of cash should school districts have. Some, yes, thank you, some legislators are talking about how it should be thirty percent. We're at forty point five. Thirty percent is unsustainable. Honestly, when staff leave us in June, we probably owe about five percent, six percent. We have encumbrances at the end of June, that's not included in that cash balance. So altogether, fifty percent is a much more reasonable number of cash that we should have on hand. But you'll see in twenty-twenty-seven, when we do hit the about thirty percent cash, you'll see it just drops really fast after that and gives you no, no time to recoup, make cuts, or even get another levy passed before, before you're just completely out of money. So that thirty percent is just not, is not a good idea. Fifty percent is a much better number for, I believe, all school districts, but especially for us. Our student counts have increased as we see growth in both residential and open enrollment students. This growth is attributed to the success of our Norwood Montessori program. So you'll see in twenty-twenty-four, we had fifteen hundred and sixty-one students, and in twenty-twenty-five, we have fifteen hundred and seventy-five. And I do include growth as we move forward, projected for the Montessori and open enrollment. Unfortunately, all school districts in the state of Ohio, or almost all school districts in the state of Ohio, are still seeing that two percent decline just based on birth rates. When comparing our past November forecast to our current one presented tonight, you will see that this year has a bit more of a shortfall than expected in November. So on this graph, the dotted line is our past forecast from November, and the solid line is our current May forecast. So you will see in twenty-twenty-five, that little dip there where we're doing slightly worse, that's due to transfers out. But through the rest of the forecast period, we stay about the same until we hit twenty-twenty-seven. The cash flow issue was repeated in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine as our local tax revenues are reduced to the city's new ordinances abating new construction tax revenue. Although none of the new apartment projects were included on the prior forecast, I did have small new construction amounts based on history of tear downs and rebuilds in the forecast. Since the city wiped out all new construction for the next fifteen years, I've been forced to remove that growth from the forecast, making our negative cash flow even worse than stated before. And another thing that you'll see, both lines, May and November, both lines have us down in that pinky-red area, which is a dangerous place to be. According to the, the State Department of Education, that's a fiscal watch area. So in this forecast, it's, it's been a really kind of a difficult forecast to prepare, but a few months ago, I said in public session that all funding sources for Norwood City Schools are being threatened. And here's just a summary of those threats. So everything from state funding cuts to tax reform legislation limiting our tax revenues and limiting our state reimbursement on tax credits, public utility tax, border revision claims, shore pay taxes, to the state's proposed cash reserve policy restricting our investment revenue. Most concerning is the total abatement of all new construction real estate revenues from the city of Norwood that continue to push real estate tax further onto the shoulders of our residential taxpayers for giving huge portions of commercial taxes to large for-profit businesses building in Norwood. Three very large for-profit apartment complexes are being built in Norwood, and they have a hundred percent abated real estate taxes for fifteen years, while our resident taxpayers continue to be forced through no fault of their own or the districts to pick up larger shares of the tax burden due to this abatement. Because of all these threats to the forecast and to our funding, I've had to be very deliberate in where my estimates come from. And so in my assumptions, which is attached to the agenda for your review, I've spelled out all of these threats and all of the things that could go wrong, all the local sources I have in the forecast projected, and so that is making our bottom line worse. All the state sources are not yet law, so I do not have those in the forecast. But I have, I have indicated what, if those pass, what it would do to our bottom line, what it would do to our, our revenues. So as I said, this has just been a very difficult forecast to, to put together. And, you know, I really hate seeing the revenues change the way they have. If some of those things from the state pass, if a combination of those things pass, the biennial budget is anywhere what they've already proposed. If Senate Bill sixty-six passes, along with the local things that we're seeing, this district's going to be a totally different district in the next couple of years because our revenues will be completely different than they are now. So as I said, in Finance Committee, this is the worst forecast I've, I've ever put together. And I really hate to present it, so. So any questions?
So I have a note for you. For the House bill, biennial budget for school funding is going to hear public testimony beginning tomorrow at four, and again on the fourteenth at nine AM. They are taking emailed statements, messages, letters, personal testimony. So if you have something together that basically explains how this is, this is the most difficult one that we have, and this is how it's going to affect our district, please submit it. They will read it into record. They've got a lot of people coming up tomorrow. But then if, if there's any way that we can be on that sounding board, I would really like to have Norwood's name on that, that list of what I know will be hundreds of schools sending in information if they're not there in person.
Yeah, just briefly, real quickly, I can say both the governor's and that House version of the biennial budget both cut about a million dollars out of our revenues. So thirty-two million dollar budget, you know, cut a million dollars out of it. A million dollars is hard to come up with, you know.
They did say they were discussing enrollment growth bonuses, but I don't know the percentage of that. And given, like you said, we've got, we've got percentages.
That's in my estimates.
Yeah.
So.
I just don't know if we'll meet it with that, with that also decline in birth rates. Like, what are they really going to hold us to in the end of what a growth rate looks like for your district? I'm, I'm worried that for some reason we'll fall just under whatever that qualifier is, just being that we're a smaller district, and a lot of small districts might hit that same hurdle.
And you're, and you're right to worry about it because a lot of times what they tell you they're going to do is not what the final version looks like, too. So as it is right now, the estimates I have for the House version, we do get the growth, whatever they call it, premium or whatever it was. But they're, because of their thirty percent mandate on cash, they are cutting so much in taxes that it's still a million dollar cut, so.
They said that's been one of the biggest feedbacks is whether or not they keep that or not, or adjust the number. And a lot of them were saying that based on the percentages they're hearing, fifty percent is more realistic. But even if they change the percentage, who's to say when you have a board policy that might outlie? Because we mentioned that having a board policy, we have so much on hand based on our needs. And they all agreed, they said, yeah, most schools have a rainy day plan or a construction plan or, you know, having a backup, being able to pay your workers through summer. We can't control what your budget versus like a Mason-sized school, like those budgets look vastly different. So, you know, how do you gauge thirty percent for somebody? So that's been a big issue on the table. I think they're going to hopefully hear districts on that. But yeah, if you have something to send up, like I said, I would, I would love to send something.
Yeah, I can get, I can get some clips together from my assumptions and get it.
I know it's short notice, that's just what they said.
No, I'm looking, I was, actually, I've been waiting to see what the Senate version looks like because a lot of times it'll just be a blending of the three. And so then you know, you know, if you know the Senate version also, then you can kind of guess where they're going to be and kind of know what, what you're going to be up against, but. I, I don't know, and you know, it's like they're completely abandoning the formula again. The House version's going to be just paid off of a guarantee. It's just, it's, it's just all so much against the Roff. You know, there's still, there's just not, they're not doing what they were told to do. What was that, thirty years ago? How many years ago was that? Can't you remember? Ninety-seven or seventy-seven, I don't remember what it was, a long time ago. So, you know, they, they're still not funding schools properly, and, and we're still, there's still too much reliance on property taxes and.
They're also looking at the mileage rates and the floor currently in another House bill.
That's how, that's Senate Bill sixty-six, and it's.
Oh, this is House one eighty-six, so it's there.
There's six of them out there, just dealing with property taxes, so. As I said, threats from every side.
Every side.
They're even threatening my interest revenue, come on. So, you know, certain questions on that, I know I went through it really fast.
So, I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but I just kind of want to highlight, you know, you talk about the state cutting funding by a million dollars. So for us, when you look at the state funding, like this year, it's going to be what, just under eight million dollars? So it's a million dollars from that eight number, not a million dollars from thirty-two. It's a million dollars from eight, so it's a big percentage that's being cut. And then if you look at our state funding over time, go back, you know, seven, eight, nine years, state funding has been pretty stagnant, like it hasn't increased. But when you take account for inflation, the value of that money isn't the same eight million dollars it was seven, eight years ago, right? Because it doesn't go as far now because of inflation. So it's kind of a double whammy. So now are you losing value because of the cost of inflation?
Right.
And now they're just flat, going to cut you a million dollars. But when you combine that with what the city has done, with the ordinance changes that they have made, which doesn't impact us this year.
Right.
But it will impact us in two or three years as one will start to feel that. So if you look at that in the packet, I mean, that's, that's over a half million dollars a year.
And that lines up really hard at that forecast level.
But, but.
When that two years starts hitting.
But that difference in that line, I mean, that's, that's thirty million dollars, right? So when you, it's kind of hard to see in that graph, but that difference between those two lines, that's a, that's a big number difference.
It is. And it makes, you know, it makes it so much worse so quickly. That's, I don't know, it didn't need to happen, and it shouldn't have happened.
So anyways, thank you for presenting the, the five-year forecast. I greatly appreciate all the hard work that has gone into it.
And a difficult one, that's for sure. Through no fault of your own.
Said through no fault of your own.
No, no, not at all. It wasn't intellectually, it was emotionally hard.
Yes.
Any other questions for Julie or comments? All right, we will go on to section six on the agenda. This is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations. So at this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Mrs. Ronan.
Thank you, Madam President. Six point oh one, I would like to congratulate and thank two long-term employees for their many years of service to the children of the district. We are losing Rick Robish and Charlie Watkins, and we wish them well. In fact, we had a retirement party for Charlie this afternoon, which was very lovely. His family came. The next item is a non-renewal of educational aides. This individual was left off the annual list last month. Then we also have a termination during probationary period. Under six point oh two, employment, we'd like to welcome Madeline St. Germain. She is a new, going to be a new music teacher for the district. And the next individual, Brianna Irenton. She is going to be at one of our elementary teachers. She's a two thousand and sixteen graduate of Norwood, and she has a child who attends Norwood View. So welcome to Brianna. And then let's see, on the next section, we also have, oh, someone added for summer school, Melissa Burns, who's helping us out in summer school. And we have a stipend for Kirsten. She's mentoring student teachers. And then we also have several of our aides who do extended-year work because they work at Bobby B. and Roston, they do have children there. Then number four, we're renewing the student assistance and educational aid that we non-renewed last month. So that's what the next two pages are. Then item number five, change in status. I'd like to congratulate Amanda Blanton. She is moving from the Norwood High School Assistant Principal role to the Norwood Middle School Principal. And also Nicole Taylor, she's moving from the Norwood Middle School Secretary to come over here and be the superintendent and board secretary. And number six, at this time, we do not have any pupil service contracts to approve due to the time of year. And thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ronan. Continuing on with the agenda, item seven, this is our Education Committee. So at this time, I will turn it over to our board member, Mrs. Rager.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first order of business is our Teacher Staff Appreciation Month Teacher of the Year. Do I say who it is first? Because it doesn't say that. It's Katie Dykes. We all love her. And we're going to read a resolution in recognition of her. So I will start, and then we're all going to take turns reading something. Whereas May fifth through ninth, two thousand and twenty-five is Teacher Appreciation Week, and May sixth, today, is Teacher Appreciation Day. And whereas education and knowledge lay the foundation for the future of our children and.
Whereas teachers play a crucial role in building a foundation for success that follows students well beyond the classroom. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, mentors, and community liaisons with students and families and.
Whereas a dedicated and inspiring individual who exemplifies these characteristics is Katie Dykes, a STEM and science teacher with Norwood City School District and a district employee for nineteen years, who was chosen to represent all the great educators in Norwood because of her innovation and excellence in education. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and going above and beyond daily and.
Whereas our community recognizes Katie Dykes and appreciates its teachers for education, educating and supporting the children of this community and empowering them to become the best version of themselves and.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Norwood Board of Education proclaims the month of May, two thousand and twenty-five, be Teacher Appreciation Month, and proclaims Katie Dykes our Norwood Teacher of the Year and forwards her name to the Hamilton County Education Foundation to be honored as their Celebrate Success Event, at their Celebrate Excellence Event, sorry. Be it finally resolved that the Norwood Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers and aides for their dedication and devotion to their work.
Good job, your teachers.
Oh, my gosh.
And I would like to add, yes, our orchestra quartet led by Allison Marshall, they were actually the entertainment at the Celebrate Excellence Ceremony and breakfast. So we got a picture with the young ladies.
My kid says she needed to get up early, and I didn't understand why. And then I got a picture of her, and I was like, what is she doing? Now I know, we were at OSBA.
Yep, there you go. So they got a great round of applause, and they were invited to stay for breakfast with all the honorees. So the, the girls were very happy.
Okay, where am I? What's next? Oh, we have the high school class of two thousand and twenty-five. Let's see them. We have, let's just say how many we have.
Where's the list? The number wasn't written on the list.
It was well over a hundred this year, right? Plus to a hundred and thirty, plus to a hundred and thirty, I think.
There's all the names, there's a lot of names.
We'll count them for next week.
Right.
That'd be good.
I'm like, I'm not going to sit here and read all these names, but yay, class of two thousand and twenty-five.
Why we are all here.
Right. And we will hear all these names at graduation. And a lot of them got scholarships, which was awesome. And I had to miss that this year because of OSBA being at the same time. So I was pretty sad about that. Our next thing is we have a Special Education Model Policies and Procedures. Here it is, but you also have electronic copies. Do we need to say anything about this, Amanda? Is this your thing or?
Also attached is the resolution, and the resolution was worked on by.
Christine, can you? Attached also is the resolution that you'll be approving next Thursday. It was worked on by our attorneys and a Special Education Committee. And so we have, our resolution shares what in this, about fifty, about fifty-one-page document of policies and procedures. It outlines what we will be eliminating as you adopt it based on the recommendations of our attorneys and the actual committee that did the work. So it is a fine model policy and procedures, but there are a few exceptions that the attorneys felt like were unnecessary, as did the committee in partnership with OSBA as well. So this resolution will be brought forward, we're bringing it forward for you to approve at your regular meeting on Thursday, and it will be included in the model policies and procedures. So they will always be united in their work.
Awesome. And then field trips, just one, Norwood View going to Surrey Square, the fifth graders. They must be going to have lunch.
Okay, continuing on with item eight, this is our Policy Committee. So I will turn it over to Board Member Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Next Thursday, we will have the second reading for approval of the twenty-four policies from last.
Okay. All right, item nine on the agenda, this is our Building and Grounds Committee. So I will turn it over to Board Member Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We will have two items. First is Best Point Behavioral Health is utilizing a Head Start Classroom at Charpsburg Primary on Wednesdays through the summer. And the second request is the Hearing Every Perspective Youth and Community Statement, Safety Summit. They would like to use the high school gym on Sunday, May eighteenth, in the afternoon for their event as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Item ten on the agenda, this is Finance Committee. So at this time, I will turn it over once again to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camps.
Thank you, Madam President. Attached to the monthly financials and the CFO report for your review, ten point oh two, the appropriation resolution, our budget for the current year, ten point oh three, the capital improvement plan. This account is funded by transfers from the general fund. Their priority list for utilizing this fund is Williams Beautification, Dr. Sabo Auditorium Updates, and North Norwood Updates. Updates, and North Norwood Updates. The Technology Fund has money transferred from the General Fund in order to save enough to replace Chromebooks and laptops in 2029. When we bought those the first time, the first year I was here, it was $1 million. It's going to be quite a bit more than that, so I'm saving to get to that. So we don't have to scramble to find it like I had to when I had to buy my first year. Permanent Improvement Plan, this account is funded by real estate revenues realized from voters during the Warm, Safe, and Dry Campaign, which established the PI Fund with 2.55 mils of funding. We use this fund to pay some of the debt from the project, to complete typical upkeep and repairs of our century-old buildings, and to continue to update the security and technology in our buildings. 10.04, the five-year forecast, as we reviewed earlier, this forecast will be approved next Thursday and submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development before the due date of May 31st. 10.05, the NTA Collective Bargaining Agreement. Attached is the draft NTA agreement, which has been ratified by our teachers' union. We talked about the details in an executive session. 10.06, copier agreement. The district received six responses to the copier request for proposal. Following a thorough evaluation based on the criteria outlined in the RFP, Donald McCarthy Enterprises, our current copier provider, was selected. They submitted the lowest base bid at $2,140 per month for a 60-month equipment lease. Even after adding some other technical benefits to the plan, we will still see savings from the current plan. 10.07, SHP Agreement. As in the past, SHP Architects will oversee the Williams Beautification Project. Because the engineer has provided the plans, not the architect, the architect's role will be limited to oversight only, and the contract per price reflects that limited work. 10.08, Planetarium Lease. A three-year lease to replace the current five-year one that is expiring. 10.09, Healthcare Connection MOU to replace the center point at the high school clinic. And 10.10, Payment in lieu of Transportation. Our annual approvals for payment in lieu of transportation to parents that have requested transportation to private schools that are out of our district. And that is everything for Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Camphouse. Item 11.
Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
Still have, we're still discussing Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's all right. So I do have a number of objections to the Planetarium lease. And so I'm going to start off by saying that, you know, I don't want to kick out Drake from the building, but I do not understand why we need to continue to enter into a lease agreement with Drake Planetarium for the usage of the space. So we have never once entered into a lease agreement for the TV studio for NCT to be housed in our building. And we, on our docket in this agenda, is to approve an MOU for the Student-Based Health Center to occupy space in our building. So I don't know why we have to enter into a specific lease with Drake for the Planetarium when we don't do this with anybody else. We just do it with Drake.
I think part of it's the liability, and they bring in outside schools, they bring in equipment of their own, it's an outside company that does all of it.
Same could be said with the Student-Based Health Center, which we're doing an MOU with. But outside of that, if the Board does decide that you want to entertain a lease agreement, I object to, in Section Number One, Item Number B, the extra space that they're looking for leasing. I don't see why they can't have everything that they need within the Planetarium section itself. I also object to Item Number Two, the term of the lease. I don't think it should be a three-year lease. I would much prefer to see a one-year lease. I don't even think we need a lease agreement. I think we could do everything that we want to do with an MOU, and everybody would be happy. Section Number Four, the rental fee. So this is an interesting one for me, because I wasn't here when Drake presented to us. I was traveling for work, but I did go back and I watched that meeting, and I watched the presentation. And so I find it incredibly odd that they have a rental section, or we have a rental section, in this lease agreement, but we have no fee schedule exhibit attached to this. So if you go back and you read this, and they just put a $15,000 per school year annual credit into this, but that's the same $15,000 number that's been in every Planetarium lease that I could go back and find. That number has never changed. And when you go back and you watch their presentations, where they tell you how much value the school district got from their services, they threw out a number of something like $270,000, which they couldn't even tell us what that encompassed. So the only thing that I could go back and say that's a five, because it was a five-year lease, that's the value that they've said that we've received over five years. Well, if you divide $270,000 by five years, that's almost $55,000 a year. So by entering into this lease agreement with this $15,000 number, technically, we could be entering in this lease owing them $45,000 a year. So I think that number, if we do enter into a lease agreement, that number needs to be at least $55,000. And then there's a section in here about how they're going to, I guess, charge us for the equipment if we do a science class in the Planetarium. I think there's a better way to handle that. I think we could get our teachers trained, so that way they can run their class as they fit and not necessarily need to have the Drake Planetarium people there. I object to Item Number Six, the last sentence in that agreement where it says, "The lessor shall provide moving assistance to lessy, as the lessy may require to relocate to a new premises under this lease." I don't agree to that. I don't think we should be paying them to move.
I think that's a, if we make them move because we need something, it's on us because we're the ones making them move.
I don't think so. I think if the lease expires, I don't think we should have to pay them because the lease expire. Now, if we decide that we want them out before the lease expires, then that's different, but that's not what this says. So, yeah, there's a lot. I don't think that we need to have this lease agreement with Drake Planetarium. I think we could do everything that we want to do and work in partnership with them through an MOU, which provides us a little bit more protection.
Would you mind sharing that?
Absolutely. So. Yes, there is.
He feels strongly about. Any other discussion, please? Can we get some sort of updates, do you think, before next week? Or, so that way we're not, okay. All right, item 11 on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Call motion.
Call a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The time is 7:34, and we are adjourned. Thank you.